Okay, we're now recording. Yeah, not because Michelle's getting fired. Just because we've already done it. So, we can remove A B and then that will, then I'd like to add four things under business, so we'd start at eight C. The first one would be a community relations committee report. Then eight D would be a review of the security survey. That we just got back. Eight E would be a middle school sports update. And eight F would be nominations for vice chair. Okay? So if everybody's in agreement with that, we accept the motion to approve the agenda as amended. So, John, thank you Bethany. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous. That brings us to our consent agenda, so I would accept the motion to approve the consent agenda, which includes our regular meeting minutes from April fifth, our special meeting minutes from April fifth, the minutes of the community relations committee meeting on April twenty fifth, the wellness committee meeting minutes, the A B C meeting minutes, and the middle school sports minutes. Thank you Bethany.
Second.
John, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Which brings us to public comment. Any public comment? Okay. So recognition of those who contribute. So this month, we're honoring our Cave Award students, Ally McCarren and Meadow Marshall. And I just want to read the letter that they are receiving from Cave. And Cave is the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education. And what we're looking for, for these winners, leadership skills, including willingness to take on challenges, capability to make difficult decisions, concern for others, ability to work with others, a willingness to commit to a project, diplomacy, ability to understand issues clearly, and ability to honor a commitment. And Michelle, we, how is it chosen in the school exactly? It's input from teachers and staff, then we choose. So the letter states, "Congratulations for being chosen to receive Cave Student Leadership Award. This prestigious award recognizes your distinguished leadership. Leadership is a quality that is hard to define, but remains critical to our society. Cave has developed criteria that help to define leadership. Your principal received a list of these criteria and was asked to name Kent Center School students who met them. Your principal considers you the school leader. We're pleased to present you, together with other student leaders across Connecticut, with our twenty-seventh annual Cave Student Leadership Award. You should take pride in the recognition bestowed upon you. We encourage you to continue to use your leadership skills as you take on new challenges. Again, our congratulations and all the best to you in the future, in your future endeavors. Cordially Elizabeth Brown, President of Cave, and Patricia McCarthy, who, Patricia, was the Executive Director and General Counsel." So, congratulations. Do you want to do pictures?
Of course.
Ally, you want to come up first? Get a picture? Right here?
Yeah, that's fine.
Congratulations. And that out, Meadow Marshall? Let me take one with Michelle. Let me take one with Michelle.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Come on, Michelle, get in there. Get in there.
There, in the middle.
Alright. Great work.
Congratulations, girls.
Congratulations. Okay, that brings us to written communication. I think you've all seen the email from Matthew Winter. So, Matt, if you don't mind, I'll, what I think I'm going to do is I'll read your first email. I'll explain our conversation, and then I'll read your second email. And you stop me if I get it wrong, or if I say something that's not real.
That's great.
So, Matthew sent us an email after our last meeting pertaining to our discussion of tuition policies.
What's that? Thank you.
And the email began, "Good morning Scott, public comment for the Board of Eds. Thank you guys for coming."
See you guys.
Thank you.
"Board members, thank you for all the hard work you do. I know that serving on local boards and commissions can at times be a thankless effort. The community is not ignorant because it doesn't agree with your assertion regarding foreign student cost burden. You just may be looking at it from a different perspective. We are not being obnoxious when we ask that the Board think about their position differently. We, or I, would prefer not to be told to get over it or move on from an unresolved conversation. I don't doubt that the cost to add a student to an up and running school is as you all have calculated, but disagree with your position that foreign students should not share in the cost to keep the school up and running. This position is akin to a member of a carpool refuses to pay for a portion of fuel, maintenance, and insurance costs for the vehicle because the driver was going there anyway. There may be good reasons to discount the actual costs, sports team, rosters, staffing efficiencies, diversity and inclusion, comparable tuition, but the starting value should include some sharing of the operating costs. I know this is frustrating, thank you, and again, and thank you again for all that you do, Matthew Winter." So, I reached out to Matthew and asked if we, if we could talk. And before we did, I went back and I listened to that conversation, the recording of that conversation. And when I talked to Matt, I said that I didn't think that you'd characterize those comments in their full context. And I was the one who made the ignorant comment. And it was in the context of bringing a discussion to the Board to consider increasing our tuition costs with inflation. And I was explaining that we had just been at the Board of Finance meeting and received pushback again on our tuition. As I think most of you know, this has been an ongoing issue for like four years. And I believe I said something like, you know, it's getting frustrating because we have made every effort to explain our position to the Board of Finance. We went so far as to go through the budget, try to identify any line in the budget that would be affected by adding a student, and then dividing that by the total number of students to try to get an idea of how much it costs us to add a student to the mix. I ran that number by Michelle, I ran it by Lisa Carter, our superintendent, and I ran it by Sam Herrick, our business manager. And they all agreed that the number I came up with, which was about five hundred dollars per student, was probably an overestimation of the cost, you know, overestimation of what it costs to add a student to the mix once the school is up and running, as you say. I think, and in, in that context, I said, I think at this point, the Board of Finance is being willfully ignorant of our argument, and when they continue to assert that it costs thirty thousand dollars to add a student. But I hope I said in the conversation that, you know, the point was taken, that it came off a little rough around the edges, and that we should probably watch our way we speak, and we don't want to give the impression that we think somebody is ignorant just because they disagree with us. I certainly don't think that, and I don't think I was saying that. And I don't want to speak for the other comments, but I believe I also said, Matt, that I think that those were made in the same context of being, feeling that the Board of Finance was being obnoxious, and that the Board of Finance should get over it, I guess. Not that people who just disagree with us, you know, should, should be that. So, I, I thought we had a great, about an hour-long conversation. I think Matt still didn't or doesn't agree that our number is necessarily correct for forty-five hundred dollars. But to his credit, he agreed to take another look. I sent him that document that, that I'm talking about with the five hundred dollars. Sent him a copy of the budget. And we spent a week or, you know, probably not the whole time, but dove into it. And we got a response back just yesterday, which I'll read, and it was accompanied by a spreadsheet. "Hey Scott, you're welcome. I believe like you do that open and honest dialogue is terribly important. Let me clarify that my reference to foreign students in my eighteenth April email meant only to identify students who are not Kent residents. I did not intend to imply any negative or ethnocentric meaning. I agree with you that tuition students is a more appropriate description. I took a look at the document you sent, and it is my personal opinion that the costs of the majority of the items in the total Kent Center School expenditure line in the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three B O E budget should be shared by tuition students. This budget of four million eight hundred and forty-nine thousand one hundred and ten dollars could be reduced to four million five hundred and fifty-six thousand five hundred and eight dollars by taking out budget lines thirty-eight, forty-five, and sixty. The question for me is how should this amount be divided? And then there's three possibilities. One, by the number of students. This seems in an inaccurate measure because the majority of Kent households pay a fraction of this quotient in property taxes. So that first number would be the thirty thousand number that the Board of Fin, or some Board of Finance members keep referring to. The second option or suggestion would be to divide that amount by the medium, median home sale price or median home value. This seems more accurate because the, this ties back to the mill rate and the method by which taxes, taxes are led. And then the third is by population or number of housing units. Probably not, because not all residents pay taxes, and housing units can vary greatly in value. I conclude that it should somehow be tied back to the mill rate, a point I know that you have made. Please take a look at the attached Excel file, which I have left in its native format in case you want to study foreigners. I also still believe that there may be good reasons to discount the actual cost to arrive at a tuition number, sports team roster, staffing efficiencies, diversity, inclusion, comparable tuition. Hopefully this frames the discussion a little differently. Matthew." So I forwarded you, I forwarded all of you the both of those messages with the spreadsheet. I have not had a chance to look at the spreadsheet yet, I'm going to do that this weekend. But I, I do want to say that I am thrilled, I think in my four years on the Board of Education, that's probably one of the best back and forths I've had with anybody. I really appreciate your willingness to engage in this, especially when you were perhaps a little bit angry. You didn't sound it, but I could understand if you were before we talked, but you were willing to talk with me. You listened to me, I hope you feel I listen to you. And as I said, I haven't dove into the numbers real deep, but on the face of it, I think your second suggestion is very interesting, and I, I think it makes a lot of sense. Our Community Relations Committee has been working along the same lines, I think as we talked about a little bit, trying to explain this number in terms of comparable taxes that somebody would pay. And one of our community relations members calculated that our current tuition would represent the taxes that somebody would pay on a million dollar property. So, we can dig into that a little bit more. I looked up the median home value in Kent just quickly last night, and came up with half a million dollars. So, I think if we did the math out with that suggestion, we might end up with our tuition at half of what it is right now. But I think that this idea of somehow getting a formula that ties tuition to mill rate is very smart, and that way it allows tuition to increase a little bit when the mill rate increases, or decrease a little bit if the mill rate ever were to decrease. And I haven't had a chance to talk to anybody else about this yet, but I can think of two other people that I think would be really interested in having this discussion, and I would really like to continue this, and maybe work out the math on this, and chase it down and see what we end up with, and see if we can arrive at a formula that we could present to the Board of Education to see how they feel about it. Of course, this is a Board of Education decision. We've already set our tuition for next year, so we have a little bit of time to discuss this. But I'm really pleased with the way the conversation is done, I hope you are too. And I really appreciate your patience and your kindness, and your willingness to throw back some facts, and, and not just assertions. So, I don't know if there's anything you'd like to add to that, Matt?
All these, the, the microphone is there? You have to speak.
We're struggling with the microphone, and I, and just as an aside, I have never really watched one of these videos, but going back to watch the discussion before our conversation, I realized that it is a little choppy, and I will be looking into getting microphones, but I think the microphone is right here on my phone.
Okay, great. I just wanted to make sure that, so I just, I want to be clear, or clarify that, I don't think that the tuition number that you all have, that you all are using is the wrong one. I don't necessarily think that it's not, that the forty-five hundred dollars is, is not the right number. I think that there, it's, it's somewhat subjective. If you come up with that formula, you have to also, as we spoke, take into account the number of students, the vibrancy of the school, the, the number of children on a, on a sports team. I think all of those things have to factor in, and even most notably, the, the tuition of other schools in the region. Because we want to, as, we, we want to be a vibrant community, so we shouldn't price ourselves out, or the Board of Eds should not price themselves out of tuition students. So, I think that the forty-five hundred dollars may be right. I just think that the way we were thinking about it, from taking the value to add a student to an up and running school, for, for me, that wasn't the right, that wasn't the right starting point.
And just to be clear, the number to add a student, we feel is five hundred dollars. So, we felt that four thousand was the, the paying for the gas, to use your metaphor, the, the gas, the maintenance, you know, that I'll keep on the car. But I think as we talked about, after you reach an agreement that you're not losing the town money, the rest is more art than science, you know? But I like this attempt because it makes it a little bit more science, you know, trying to quantify that extra amount, and how that rises and falls with taxes. So, I think it's a really interesting idea, and I think you're absolutely right that we weren't seeing, I wasn't seeing it from that perspective, like nobody had really presented it that way before, and that was what had been getting so frustrating. But I really appreciate this, and I, I think we're on to something, and I think you've moved that discussion further along than it's moved in the four years that I've been aware of it, so I really appreciate it. So, we'll, we'll see, I'll, I'll be in touch, and maybe informally, we can continue this discussion, and include a couple other people, and see if we can come up with something that sounds reasonable to a lot of people.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Matt.
Thanks for all you do. I see, it's, I know, it's hard.
Have a good night.
Yeah, you too.
Thank you.
Okay. Region one report, Jen, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, we can hear you. Is the sound okay for you guys?
It's very choppy, honestly.
Yeah.
This is the first time I've done, this is the first time I've participated since we set up the Google Meet. You fade in and out a lot, it's so good to have, so.
Hold on, I can't, not that way.
Yeah.
Okay, alright, so this, this one will be pretty quick in comparison to some of my reports. So, the May report was just on Monday. Sorry, the May meeting was just on Monday. So, Ian presented a PowerPoint on student life conferences, which was pretty interesting. It's in the, it's in the board packet, if anybody's interested in looking at it. The high school has really just started doing the student life conferences. You know, in the elementary schools, it's been that way for several years. It's a newer, you know, something newer at the high school. So they're just doing some, you know, surveys and getting feedback to see how both students and teachers and parents are feeling about that. We did approve the hire of a new phys ed teacher, which is exciting. Oh, let's see. And a lot of approvals for non-resident AgEd tuition students for next year, a non-resident faculty student for next year. We approved an AgEd field trip to the Washington Leadership Conference, and also the AgEd field trip for the F F A Alumni Exchange for this summer. We, we did approve a list of, a list of policies, but really, you know, nothing, nothing notable, really the same process that we're going through. And then I think the last really important thing is very exciting, and Janine, I hope I'm not stealing your thunder here, but we did approve the hiring of, oh, my straighter, Ashley Holmes for the position of Supervisor of Special Education. So, as everybody knows, Martha Swayker is retiring at the end of the year. Rebecca Gagefield-Clark is going to take her position, and then Ashley Holmes will, will move into, will, will, you know, replace with that guy in her position. So, unfortunately, I was serving up, remember, Michelle served on the search committee for that. I had started to, but then was traveling, but we had the meeting, so I did not have the opportunity to interview Ashley. But from everything I've heard, it was a very, very positive selection. We're very excited about it, so. And then I'm sure that everybody has heard, but the record I did, or the, in the record, the region one budget did pass yesterday. So, that is always a sigh of relief when that happens, so. Very happy to share that. Any questions? For report this one.
Does anybody have any questions for Jen? No, thank you, Jen.
Does Janine want to cover it?
No.
Okay.
Okay.
Did I steal your thunder, Janine, I'm sorry? No.
Okay, that brings us to business. So, solar panel update. The Green Bank informed us last month that they won't be moving forward with the project because of, after we started getting down to brass tacks and details, they realized that there wasn't enough area to put up solar panels in order to have money, so. That, that's unfortunately bad.
What about, I mean, we can, I don't know, we can do it through Kent Center School, but the C C M has a lot of contractors on their list, engineers, everybody. And some, one of, one of the two were solar panels as well, so can we reach out to them?
We, yeah, we can keep pursuing this. This, this would be starting all over and be, you know, more of a long-term thing, but yeah, we certainly can.
John, what would stop that has a list of contractors?
Oh, it's the C C M.
Oh, that is, that, that's the Green Bank?
No, that's, it's the Conference of
Connecticut?
Municipalities?
Connecticut Municipalities.
Something like that?
Yeah.
Oh.
It's, there's, there's forty-five pages of different contractors that they recommend.
I know, John, that the town is still looking into it to the Conservation Committee that started this whole project, and ended up on our roof, but they're, I think they're re-
Passionate.
Yeah, restarting and, and looking for other options for town as well, so.
Because there's also their grants, there's a grant people are there to as well that we should be looking into, considering what we went through for this budget, so.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know if we have to talk to the, 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 is it the town selectmen, or do we have to go, we can go on our, we can go on our own? You got a grant right there? Yeah.
We could, it's just, I mean, right now, for us, our building at all is not feasible.
Right.
It wasn't, it not, has nothing to do with Connecticut Green Bank or the contract or anything, it's just our building. We only have a certain square footage that you can put anything on the roof right now until-
Well, we can also do, over there on Maple Street, we've put in some solar panels, but they're on the ground, and it takes in, you know, saves a lot of energy, so.
Yeah, I, I think it's, it's going to happen in town somehow, it's just been, you know, hard to get it off. But I think the new round, from what I heard, makes it a lot easier. They, you know, this first round, they weren't allowed to do it at the firehouse, but that's actually a good spot. And then these new round of grants, I think allow more flexibility to start thinking about the issue. So, we'll, we'll keep that in mind. So, A, B, I guess curriculum framework. I hope you all had a chance to read that. I know, I don't, I don't think Lisa was at our last month's meeting.
Michelle.
So, I don't know if we talked about this specifically, but it was in her report. If you had a chance to read her report last month, we're required by state law to have a curriculum committee. We have been operating, I don't want to, you know this better than me, so maybe I should just let you explain that.
We sort of have been operating in silos, I guess, and kind of in a region, and it's sort of been a little bit of a mix, but the state is requiring us to have a school district curriculum committee. So, moving forward, our curriculum steering committee is going to be the administrative team, which is the principals of each of the schools in the region, plus Janine, and will be responsible for reviewing current data, talking about curriculum and instruction, and then talking about making recommendations to modify what we have, or if something comes through from the state, like we're working with right now, they're mandating a new curriculum. That's being looked at by a different committee, but also being run by the admins. And then there'll be sort of subcommittees of the big committee, right? So, we'll be doing it just the admins, we'll be taking it back to our smaller committees, our grade level teams, our leadership teams, so everybody will have a voice in it. And it will be sort of come back to that centralized steering committee team.
So that mandatory, that mandatory that was passed last year for all schools to be learning about climate change? That starts in September?
Yeah, so all, all of those, you know, statutes are reviewed,
Right.
and, you know, brought up to this committee as it is anyways, and now we're just officially naming us. Right, Janine?
Yeah, you know, as Michelle said, we, we have done this as a region for a long time, we're just looking to codify it.
So, if there are no questions, or are there any questions? Then I would accept the motion to approve the curriculum framework as outlined in that document. That is my thoughts. Thank you, Bethany.
Second.
Thank you, John. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye, aye, aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Okay, Community Relations Committee report. I just first wanted to say that thank you on behalf of the Board to Steve Penner, who's a member of our Community Relations Committee. He, out of his own pocket, hired a photographer to come to the school and take a bunch of really great photos. They even brought a drone, and they got a lot of great aerial photos of like the field and the school. It's, it's awesome, really great, that the Community Relations Committee would start to, would like to start using in our website and, you know, Facebook page, and just to have, start building a library of candid shots. And so we're gonna, I, we're gonna with Michelle figure out how we can, you know, gather these pictures into like a preliminary folder that they can, you know, because some kids are not approved for being on social media and stuff, so then somebody at the school can go through those pictures, approve them, or discard the ones that we can't use, and it could just be an ongoing process, so. That was really great of Steve, and I just wanted to thank him for doing that.
Our current Facebook profile picture is one of his pictures.
Yeah, great, they're already used in.
But he hasn't seen it. I can turn around and show it to you.
Yeah.
That's beautiful.
It's really, really cool. Really, a lot of really great pictures of the building, and students, and inside.
We've forgotten the landscape, we've done. Great times.
And then I also would just, we need to add two more members officially to the committee. So I would accept a motion to appoint Tom Ryan and Ellen Beteritz to the Community Relations Committee. Bethany, second, Naomi. Thank you, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
I'm sorry, Naomi seconded it?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so, the security discussion, or the review of the security survey. I hope you all had a chance to look at the spreadsheet. I didn't- I didn't. Um, I haven't looked at it since last night. I think this morning there was a hundred and thirty-four responses.
Yes. We're now at a hundred and thirty-five.
Coming in as good, John.
So I don't know that there's a whole lot to say. I mean, um, we can certainly discuss this. If anybody has questions or comments they wanna make. I mean, so far, this was with one thirty-three. I know the, the one this morning was a yes also. I don't know if the one thirty-five was a yes as well. Okay, so the margin is even bigger. But the overall guess is last night with one thirty-four. Uh, the question was, do you, do you support armed security or?
Thirty-six seven. Do you support a full-time school safety officer at Kent Center School?
And so, uh, we have sixty-eight and a half, probably a little bit more right now, saying yes, they do support a armed si- uh, school security officer. That broke out into about seventy-one percent of parents saying yes, sixty-five percent of staff. And again, these numbers are probably just slightly different, uh, slightly higher now. And then if you look at the maybes, um, you can look at the comments with the maybes. I think there's a good portion of those maybes that are pretty close to yes. They may have a couple of specific questions or concerns that I think, um, are addressable. So if you combine the yeses and the maybes, not that all the maybes would be yeses, but that gets us to about eighty-five percent. So, um, I'm not sure there's much more to say about that. I, when I looked at it, you know, the, the maybes were, a lot of concern about the, uh, the environment in this school, not wanting to, if it feel, um, intimidating. Yep, or anything like that. Um, there's one, not sure if, you know, what, what would the, the job description would be and what, you know, what they'd be doing. I think also, um, some people might be thinking of the SRO, which we pursued last fall. This would be something different. It'd be a cheaper option that we're looking into, um, exploring. Now, is there anything you wanna add, Michelle, to that, or anybody else that you saw in the comments that stood out to you, or any comments? I, I think this is, you know, one step, uh, in our journey to discuss this and, and think about it. Um, we're gonna meet tomorrow with the Beach and Fifteen superintendent to, they also have armed guards there. Um, we're gonna get a chance. I think he's gonna present to us a little bit about what they have going on there and how they run their program. Um, and then we'll have an opportunity to ask any questions that we might have. Um, and I think it's just all in the name of gathering information. And, uh, maybe at our June meeting, we can come back together and see everything we have and, and start to think about if, uh, if there's any steps that we wanna take. I'll say that I, I don't know if I've said this yet at the last meeting. I, I talked to Maria Horn. I talked to, uh, S- Steve Harding, our, our state rep and our state senator. Uh, they're both very helpful and friendly. Uh, but there's no grant funding available for any of this right now. Uh, Steve Harding has said that he is gonna try to include uh, something along those lines in, in this year's budget. I don't know if they'll be successful or not, or what that would look like exactly. But that would probably be more of a long-term thing. Um, I've spoken with the head of security over at Kent School. Um, had great conversations with him. Um, he's available to us as a resource if anybody has any questions about how they do things over there. That's a new program for them. Uh, one of the things, well, I think maybe it's hard to remember. It's unfortunate. And I was telling Michelle this morning, I, I hate hearing like, I sound so pretentious every time. But, but these que- these discussions, there's always like a mix of, well, don't say that publicly, please, but you can say this publicly. So I'm losing track right now of what, what's shareable and what wasn't. But, um, certainly a resource for us over there, um, if we have any questions about how they run their program or, or any, um, challenges they encounter. He seems to be very happy with it so far.
I think I would just add that if you look at the comments, even with the yeses, the no's and the maybes, all of them, it's very clear that there is very different perceptions on what we're looking to add to the school-
Yes.
And what, um, people think that we are adding. So I think just going forward, even for you guys, because you're out in public, people might be asking you questions that we make sure, when we move forward, we come to a, an agreement about, you know, what is it that we actually want? And I think the conversation with Josh Smith tomorrow night will be very helpful.
That's on Zoom, right?
That's, that's his own meeting. That's.
One other choice is that, um, to reinstate the DARE program, um, which is, I don't know if that, if we're gonna incorporate that into your programs. Uh, if everything else fails, you know, this might be an idea to do. So, and Steve is gonna push hard on that for, uh, the state. So we'll see what happens.
I, I think one thing to note is, you know, in the fall, our, our first choice for security was an SRO, which is, um, a currently, uh, enrolled police officer in uniform and, and all that. Uh, the town said no to that. So what we are exploring now is an SSO, which is an armed security guard. It's a retired police officer. Uh, somebody with similar amount of training, but not currently on the police force. A lot of these decisions, if we move forward, would be decisions that would have to be made, uh, together, but likely not really wearing a uniform, maybe a, a shirt, you know, to identify. Likely, um, carrying a concealed handgun, not, um, out in the open, not very visible. It's, it's a much lower impact, uh, visibly to the school. And, um, so that's threatening. Yeah, possibly less. I, I mean, I didn't find a, a cop threatening either, but I know some people did. So I think if you found that idea of a police officer threatening, this might be something that you found less threatening, possible. But again, that, I don't wanna get too ahead of ourselves. We're still just thinking. We, and we don't even know yet if this is an option we wanna pursue. But, um, just to keep in mind that the, the one we aren't thinking about now is different from the one we pursued in the fall. We got a no from the town for the SRO, so, uh, we're not trying to push that again.
I thought the response was interesting.
Yeah.
I like, I mean, I like to know peoples and I agree. I thought they were all very different in terms of what, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
The main issue, the main issue was people that said no were about, they were afraid of it.
A lot, yeah.
A lot of them said that.
A lot of people said it doesn't make difference.
Yeah, a lot of people said that too.
A lot of people referenced the studies show that it's.
Yes, um, which I disagree with, but.
Which in our cover, I mean, um, I told Scott that I'd talked to the people over at the Connecticut Center for School Safety.
Yeah.
We do a lot of webinars with our own safety plans and they sort of commented on the same thing. That's a very tough study and research to put out.
Quantify deterrence is a good, yeah, quantify.
Well, it's impossible. To quantify deterrence. And also I think a lot of these studies that measure, uh, violence in schools within SRO, they're lumping, SRO started, I, somebody correct, probably earlier, I think. I'm forgetting. I think it was far back as the fifties that it really started. But I think they gained popularity in the nineties, um, trying to fight crime in schools, in schools that had crime problems. And a lot of these studies that study the effect that SROs have on violence, just mix in all of those schools. And we're not looking for security to, uh, do any crime fighting or discipline in the school. So I think when people cite those studies and say, see, I mean, this school still has violence, or there's still incidents of violence in this school with an SRO. I think we're really comparing apples and oranges a lot of the time. And they all get thrown into the same study. It's, it's really hard to tease out, you know, the fact that an SRO or that armed security has with a study, I think.
Yeah.
That's, you know, I think. We'll just keep, uh, at it. And I think tomorrow will be, you know, great to get some more information. Uh, does anybody have anything else that they wanna say?
One more question. Other, other schools in Region One, does anyone have?
Oh, that's the other thing. I'm sorry. Thank you for reminding me. So I went to the ABC meeting this month and asked if any of the other schools in the region were, uh, considering any armed security in their schools, or if they were willing to, or if they were willing to consider, if they were willing to consider possibly cooperating regionally on the, like a security program. Um, and I think the answer was no, basically. Um, I got a couple of the board chairmen said that they'd be willing to take it back to their board and have the discussion again. A lot of them have had this discussion, uh, last year after Uvalde. And I think the sense I got was that they're all pretty comfortable with where their boards stand and they don't feel like they wanna open up that conversation again. But, um, I told them that if, you know, we're, we're always open if they change their mind, or, you know, if anything changes, that we would always be willing to talk about cooperating. But I think for now, it's not really an option.
But they don't.
And they don't.
They don't.
None of the other schools do. But I, I have to say, Region One is becoming a little bit of an outlier nationally. I think, uh, it's two-thirds of schools now have some form of security in their school building. Um, so we're really kinda trending toward being an outlier on this issue. But it's a difficult issue, so we'll take it step by step. Okay, so does anybody have anything else? Okay, uh, middle school sports. So just very quickly, this doesn't affect us a ton, but it, you know, it will affect us in the future if we ever end up joining the middle school sports program. Uh, the way that the middle school sports program is funded right now was, um, I think it, they just split it equally. They just split it in fifths. They, cause we're not participating. So they, they took their middle school sports budget and they split it in fifths. Um, and North Cannon this year, uh, there was several, three or four, I think, members on their Board of Education that were very angry about this because their participation is very low in the program, but the budget is increasing. And so their, their contribution is increasing, but their enrollment in the program is declining and they weren't happy with it. And they wanted a change, or they didn't wanna be a part of it anymore. So, um, I guess, I believe it was Lisa and McNeil, uh, Sam Herrich, I think, all got together at David Allison. And they came up with what I think is a, a really good, fair idea. They decided to charge based on participation. So I was a little unclear on the mechanics of it because you have to put a certain amount in your budget. And then from what I understood, that following year, they would, uh, add up how many of your students actually participated and then give you your bill based on your participation, your, your percentage of participation in the, in the program. For Salisbury, this year would have meant a thirty thousand dollar increase in their contribution to the sports program. But, um, to David Allison's credit, he agreed that it was a fairer way to run the program. And I think all the board chairs agreed, or this was at the, uh, this was at the middle school sports. So all the, uh, middle school sports representatives agreed that it was a fairer way to do it. And, um, we decided that we would go back to our boards and just make, check in with our boards to make sure that, uh, you were all okay with changing the funding structure. For Kent, we pay just a flat rate because we don't participate fully. We just participate in sports or activities that we don't offer here at Kent Center School. We've been paying a flat rate of twenty-five hundred dollars a year. If we switch to this new funding model, our bill this year would have been twenty-nine hundred dollars. So about four or five hundred dollars more. I don't think it's really gonna be, have a big impact on us. I agree it's a fair way to fund it. I think it's a way to allow them to keep the program going and to continue to develop it and work the bugs out. So I was in favor of it. I don't know how the rest of you feel about that, if you're okay with it. I don't, I honestly don't think our opinion's gonna matter a ton for what they do cause we're such a small part of it. But, um, I just wanted to check in, make sure that you guys are okay with that. Yeah? Okay, I don't think we need a motion. I think it was just, like, getting a sense of the board. Okay, so that brings us to vice chair. Uh, Gonzo was our vice chair. He's left the board. And I wanted to wait until we had a full board to, uh, fill that position again. But now that we have a full board, I think we should, uh, take nominations for vice chair. And I would like to start by nominating John Grant. And I believe the way this runs is we don't need seconds for these, but we can nominate a bunch of people if, if we like. So I don't know if anybody has anybody else they would like to nominate for that position? And if not, then.
Nobody wants it?
Um, if not, I would, I think we can go right to a vote on that. Although in favor of John Grant, uh, as vice chair, say aye.
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 Opposed? I think.
Thank you.
I think that's unanimous. Congratulations, John.
Do I get a button?
Yeah, definitely a button. Well, actually, you get to wear the, uh, costume. That's John, John with the vice chair, wearing the costume.
But this changes, right? Does it say vice chair?
I don't know.
Uh, but it did, not yet.
Not yet.
Oh, it will.
I'll be on it first thing tomorrow.
Yeah, that's what you get.
Okay.
Thank you all.
Thank you, John, for doing. Okay, that brings us to the principals report.
Great. So, uh, as I'm sure you saw, I have a very short report this month. We are, um, in the middle of a very busy end to the year. So that will be what my reports are full, I'm sure. But, uh, we just finished Earth Week, so I would love to publicly thank our Arbor Day committee, which is, um, second grade teacher Anne Starr, first grade teacher Megan Tolaskey, fifth and sixth grade teacher Chris Rose, and I'm missing someone. Alan Tarbarra, thank you. Our teacher, Alan Tarbarra. And, uh, a couple of helpers, Ms. Morrow here in the library and Mr. Corrier, our music teacher. So the Arbor Day committee put together a week-long, um, Earth Week activities. As you might have seen on front doors, they do have a, they have a story up along the school, outdoor of the school. So they had a story walk. Tuesday was buddy reading day for, uh, students in K through four. And then students in faculty had specific Arbor Day, um, focused science lessons. Um, on Wednesday, we had a spirit day in wearing green and blue. And then on Friday, we had our annual Arbor Day ceremony, which again, second year that we have bought at Planty Tree in town. We're right then in the road this year from the frontier building. Um, we're really happy for that change. We don't have any more room on Kent Center School campus, but I think that, you know, every year they go out and they try to find a different spot in town. There are four or five potential spots every year, but we have to think about where can we fit two hundred students? Um, and also, you know, being able to walk there, et cetera, et cetera. So that was a great spot this year. And, um, the rain held off just for the thirty minutes we were out there. Um, and then of course, we came back to the gym and celebrated our recycling poster contest winners. Um, Ms. Morrow doing an activity with, um, for her fifth grade class with Burzy, Brian, and Ross Rock. So they talked about their connections in Kent. And we sang the Ratlin Robb. And the eighth graders presented their Arbor Day murals, which are still in the gym, um, and will be up for the art show, which is starting tomorrow. So that was Earth Week and Arbor Day. Um, also last week, we had our middle school musical, which again, you know, thank you to the community relations committee because we advertised for the community to attend that. And Scott and I were talking this morning about some of the members of the community we saw there that are not affiliated with the school. So that was great. Um, it was a really great musical and we are on the road to getting a grant. We're trying to get a grant for a new sound system because the sound in the afternoon performance was one hundred times better than the night performance. And I felt really bad for all of the, uh, seniors that were there because I know it was so hard to hear. But we're gonna work on it. So that's, that's good news. Um, and we are currently in the middle of state testing. So grades three through eight are doing the state testing right now. Um, thank you to the PTL. They have provided snacks. So they get snacks every morning. And Mrs. Soul has been visiting us with her not yet licensed, but almost licensed therapy dog, Wiley. So Wiley's been, uh, always in the morning, uh, greeting those students who are testing and giving them a little bit of a calming feeling before they have to, uh, sit down to take their test. Tomorrow night, we are doing the spring concert. So Mr. Corrier and his current student teacher, Mr. Wong, will be working with their, uh, instrument students for the spring concert. And then, um, before the spring concert, the- And then, um, before the spring concert, the art show will start, so five thirty to seven tomorrow is the art show. And then it will run again on Friday. So please come if you are available, of course. So everything in my, uh, report this week has to do with Earth Week or the musical. We did donate five bags of, um, gently-used clothing to the Kent Thrift Shop, which was also a student council fundraiser during Earth Week. Um, Rita has attached the budget summary and budget details. So this time of year, we are looking through, you know, those line items that are unexpended and figuring out what, what will be spent before the end of the year and, um, what needs to be spent before the, uh, budget year closes. I met with the leadership team yesterday. Uh, we talked a little bit about a shift in focus for our team for next year and we are going to think of a new name. We don't wanna be called the Leadership Team. I think of something else. But, um, we're gonna sort of shift our focus to focusing on the instruction in the building and trying to drive our professional learning around what students need and using the members of that team to be focusing on one different need for students each trimester. And the team members going out and collecting data and figuring out, you know, what do I see, what do we not see? Um, and trying to use our monthly faculty meetings and our, um, early release days to, um, sort of personalize that professional learning around what we need here in the building. We did not have to meet that many times this year because we didn't have a lot to discuss. So we're trying to make that to be more effective for next year. So we have a plan for our May faculty meeting and then that will help us, uh, design our professional learning for next year, which I will share with you guys in June. Um, I talked about the spring concert. There was a lot of drama over staff appreciation this year because the Teacher, Teacher Appreciation Day was different on every single website you looked on. So the official Teacher Appreciate, Appreciation Day was either Tuesday, May second, or Tuesday, May eighth, Tuesday, May ninth. So we're celebrating it on Tuesday, May ninth. And we will be celebrating all of our staff next week with a really fun weekend. I'm not gonna share what it is, cause if any of them watch, we're gonna give away. So I'll talk about that a little bit in June too, about what we did. Um, and of course, there are, you know, field trip school tour starting the month of May. Um, eighth graders are heading to Boston for their end-of-year trip and will be in June before you know it. Any questions?
Questions from John. And then remember.
They're not having to, they're not doing six flags this year?
Uh, they did not do the music trip. They did not do the Six Flags music trip this year. Yeah, I don't know why, but nobody's doing it this year.
And then remember, we have the, um, staff appreciation on May eleventh at the By the Fife at four.
So it's that entire week.
Yeah. Wow, did we, did we think about that when we were planning it? That's good planning.
All right, any more questions for Michelle? Okay, uh, Lisa's not here, um, but her report is linked in the agenda. Y'all had a chance to read it. And now bring us to Dr. Janine Rose for the Assistant Superintendent's Report.
Um, folks.
Hi, Janine.
Sorry, I've got a lot of interference, so I'm gonna try to get to a better spot. So I just wanna focus on one area for our fiber report tonight and that is with the science reading update and our approval of, um, uh, one of the state-approved reading programs. So we have a team of ten teachers, representatives from all the school districts, all the K eight schools, reading and, um, interventionists and elementary school teachers. And this team has been fantastic. We went to advance, reviewed samples that they had there. We were able to eliminate four of the seven state-approved programs. And from there, we actually ordered our own samples and did a deeper dive into those samples um, using a, um, curriculum evaluation tool put out by the Reading League. Um, so the team sat down for about three hours, reviewed all the programs, kind of like in a, in small teams, um, going through and looking at the details of each, each program based upon that, um, curriculum review guideline. Um, I did big gathering prices for the boards of ed. Um, I still have one, one publisher that needs to get back to me and another one that I really just kinda have a question about, cause it's a little bit different than the rest of them. So I'm gonna make sure we're comparing the apples to apples. But I do anticipate that in June, um, and before that, we'll go to the principals and the Curriculum Committee. Um, and we will present to the principals and the principals will make the final decision of which program we would like to move forward on based upon teachers' recommendations. I do anticipate that in June, we'll be able to come to all the boards of ed um, with the, uh, program that we would recommend purchasing for grades K through three and that, um, you know, will purchase for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. So that will give the school boards a year to be able to kind of plan around. Um, we'll also be able to use, um, refunding, re-grad money towards the purchase of that program. So, um, there will be some supports in other places and we'll also look at seeing what we can do from the central offices. Um, money, um, how we can support districts as well, supporting the purchase of those curriculum areas. Um, so this is the big one that's kind of coming up. Um, and, uh, so I just wanna kind of update you on where we are with that program. And, uh, if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, Janine. Does anybody have any questions? Okay, thank you very much, Janine.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Have a good night.
You too. Um, public comment, there is no public, so that, accept motion to adjourn. Thank you, Bethany. Second. Thank you, Naomi.
We should stay here, right?
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you very much.
Yes, well, oh, I forgot, I forgot official, I'm sorry.
That's pleased to hear. Glad, glad. That's what I was.
I'm so sorry. That is what I am terrible at.